The City of Milton Common Council Meeting, Tuesday, November 17th, 2015, at 7:01 PM. Item number one, can we get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The meeting was noticed here at City Hall, the Piggly Wiggly, and Dave's Ace Hardware.
Okay, item number two, approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor? Okay, we have an agenda. Item number three, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action, just one minute to pause. Just for clarification, this is separate from the public hearing, if that makes sense. Is there anybody signed in? Lance, were you wanting to speak at the public hearing on the budget or on something else?
I'm not sure where it would be appropriate to speak on.
You can just go now.
Now would be...
Sure.
Depends on what he wants to say.
We'll sit you down if we don't like what you're saying.
Okay, okay, just don't throw stuff at me. I also spoke at the school board meeting about the same subject because it pertains to both the city and the school. This is my opinion about, in the media lately, there's been talk of a land trade between the city and the school district of 22 acres, I think, to help the city fund road and parking lot construction in front of Milton East. This traffic problem near the school was even discussed in the 2010 version of the Goodrich Square Master Plan. Since then, many projects took priority over the safety of the school kids. Now it seems the school district is jumping at the chance to pay for public road and public parking construction. The City of Milton is trading undesirable land at an exorbitant price because they are short of cash and are being pressured to fix their traffic issue. This plan to trade cash for land that is being labeled as a win-win is far from it for the school district. It contradicts all of the recommendations in the City of Milton Comprehensive Plan of September of 2015, page 120. They discuss if a city wants to put in a sports complex, what criteria to follow. One of those recommendations is to promote safe community access via bike, car, and walking. I think everyone would understand that that's pretty far out there for young people, anyone to travel by bike and walking. Also, you know, it's on a state highway going through roundabouts and a lot of truck traffic from industrial park, which doesn't help. It also discusses that a sports complex should be central to population masses, and I think that's also not centralized, like next to the YMCA or something like that would be. It conflicts with other area uses, which they say you shouldn't mix sports complex with, and so that's industrial park, you know, keep it as industrial park, don't mix a little bit of this and that. Another recommendation is it should be 30 to 40 acres near where the city would think with growth, that's where the next school would be. And once again, I don't think that would be, you know, something where you want a school next to the big intersection in industrial park. And so if you go to page 120, they have those recommendations for that, and I just think, you know, make smart moves versus just kind of grabbing at something, you know. That's basically just what I want to say is, you know, just think twice on location, you know, for what you plan on, or what might happen. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number four, City of Milton 2016 Budget Public Hearing and Presentation.
This evening, we'll have the 2016 budget public hearing. As folks maybe have followed along, either by attending the meetings or in the Courier and in the Gazette, the budget deliberation process, public process started on October 6th. It's gone through a couple different iterations up to it, including last week Tuesday, in which we had a public budget study session, in which there were some additional alterations to that budget. The Courier did an excellent job kind of reporting those changes and the impact that has on the community. But one of the most important pieces of this process is the part that comes tonight, in which we have the public hearing, in which folks are able to speak on things that they see in the budget that they like or don't like, or things that they don't see in the budget that they like or don't like. So if there's questions from the public or questions from the council about the budget, the specific aspects of the budget, you know, we certainly can answer those. Otherwise, we can open the public hearing, and just so the council's aware, there is another item further down on the agenda for additional budget discussion, but we could certainly have that during this time as well. But there would be a, there should be a separate public hearing in which members of the public can speak if they so choose, and we can do that now if that's okay with everybody.
So, I just want, just for some more clarification, when we officially open the public hearing, then that's the opportunity for the public to speak, but there isn't a dialogue or an interchange between council members and the public during the public hearing, it's just an opportunity for the council to listen. And so, I guess if we have, if you have specific questions, you might want to ask them either, I guess, before the, before the public hearing is open.
Sure. I don't know if anybody speaks anyways.
Is there anybody that would like to speak or comment, or ask any questions, including the council or anybody in the audience?
I have an email, does that consider a public hearing portion, or does that go into the council discussion?
You certainly can read it into the record, as part of the public hearing or not, I think it's one way or one way, shape or form, we can get it into the record. But you should officially open the public hearing.
I mean, okay, so, I'm going to officially open the public hearing now. Is there anybody from the public that would like to come up to the podium and speak on the budget? Linda, do you, would you like to read the email then?
Yes. "City Council, I'm writing this letter to ask the council to consider adding $1,000 to the budget geared towards the Tourism Committee. I served on this committee for 15 years, I am aware of the many benefits of promoting the city. The Chamber of Commerce talks about financing a commercial for several years, but the funding was never there. When the city took over tourism again, I was happy to see the subject came up and became a reality. As a small business owner, I along with three other businesses have shared the cost of commercial for several years and all have seen benefits to our business. We now get customers from Walworth County and Olive Rock. Customers like to tell you that they saw the commercial, so it's been helpful to track the success of it. A commercial promoting Milton is a vibrant, interesting community to not only visitors, but possibly bring new business or relocate here as a benefit to the entire city. This is not about the city advertising for business, it's about the city promoting our entire community. I hope you will take that into consideration. Thank you sincerely, Terry Williamson, owner of Goodrich Hall Antiques and Goodrich Antiques and Vintage Uniques."
Do I have to print that for you to have as part of this record?
Forward it.
Thank you. I also have an email that I received. It says, "Dear Mayor, thank you so much for the work you did to bring the Janesville Transit System to Milton. I've lived in Milton my whole life, volunteering all over town, food pantry, the library, the gathering place, but I've been unable to independently travel to Janesville before. I use JTS all the time to do my own grocery shopping, see a movie, and enjoy a cup of coffee at Starbucks, all things I would have had to inconvenience family and friends for before I was able to take the bus. Please reconsider having the JTS go from Milton to Janesville again, so that people like myself can remain independent. I understand that budgets are tight, but perhaps funding could be found so that JTS could do a few runs to Milton each week. I respectfully ask for you to look at ridership numbers again if possible. I value being a member of this wonderful community, but it is extremely important to be able to utilize the amenities of Janesville. Thank you for all the work you do to keep Milton a great place to live. Thank you, Tony Schmidt."
And I also received that very same email.
May I, is this something we've explored? Obviously, we saw the reduction from 32 to 24 to have it reduce service on a daily basis, like Monday through Friday, but is there something, have we looked at the option of a Monday or a Friday, have it come once, twice a week?
I guess just a couple things. I think we should, before we kind of discuss individual items, we should close the public hearing if there's no additional comments, not to be a stickler for the rules, but if we're going to discuss a specific item, we should probably make sure that everybody's exhausted their opportunity to speak at the public hearing, and then if that's the case, then I can respond to your question.
I'm wondering if there's any other emails that anybody received?
Is there any further comment from the public? Okay, not seeing any further comments, I'm going to close the public hearing on the 2016 City Milton Budget.
To answer Councilmember Zajak's question, we looked at a variety of options with JTS, but we didn't look at an option, we didn't look at an option as you just described, making it two days a week as opposed to five days a week, or making it, you know, three days a week. So that is an option, that is an option that we had not explored. If the council would like to see that exploration, we certainly, we could do that. I spoke with Janesville today, and knowing that there may be this discussion this evening, and asked the question, if the council chooses to change their mind and bring the service back, would you have us back? And I actually got a text right before the meeting that said that they would, that they would bring us back into the fold, but that would, but changing the scope would require some additional research, and their budget gets adopted next week, Monday, so we, they would have to be a pretty quick turnaround, and we'd like they have to hold a special meeting or something to that effect in order to bring that back on. But that's up to the council, if that's something that they'd like to explore.
So, we don't know, I guess, what that price of that would be, we don't know if that's actually something that they can do, because I don't know the logistics of providing a service and possibly not having another bus driver, who knows how it ends up working out, but I don't know if you need a formal motion, but I don't have a problem with a special meeting if all that works out, so do you need something like that? Or can you look at that on your own?
I guess I will see to the mayor. I don't have a problem researching it, but I don't know.
I don't have any issues researching other, any other options we have to provide some sort of transportation services. One of the things that we discussed was, is there any capability for having a, some sort of collaborative effort to have a volunteer driver service, that the city would partner with other agencies to provide some sort of transportation? Those are things that were discussed, so, I mean, certainly we could, you know, we could have staff just research a couple of, you know, are there any feasible options? So, certainly, I think probably a motion would be the best thing, we could just direct them to research what options are available.
I would just suggest that, as noted by Al before, that you do have an item on your agenda, number 10, I believe it is, discussion and possible action regarding a 2016 budget. And I know that this came about because of an email as part of the public hearing, and so there was some clarification, I think it's fine, but I think if there's going to be a specific action referenced to the budget, which is what this is, that would be a better place to do it, just for clarity. And then at that point in time, if the council wants to schedule a special meeting to address the budget, then that would be a good, a good place to do that.
Okay. Okay, was everybody, wait till 10? So, why don't we just go ahead and move to item number five, approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries.
You guys, you need to use your microphones. Everybody. Just a suggestion.
I do have them all turned on, I was just double checking, I have them all turned on.
The other thing that I'm confused at when I read the Common Council minutes is, I am confused whether Teresa and Jeremy were there or were excused, if you look on the minutes for the Common Council on November 10th.
I noticed that today when I was going over the packet, and I've actually already made the changes, but they were indeed absent or excused.
We were there.
Last...
When we met on the 10th.
Oh!
It was the one we...
I'm sorry, yes.
So that's what I'm confused.
Right. No, that was, that was definitely a mistake of the clerk.
It's updated on the website.
Yeah.
Yep. I'm looking at the website right now, so I don't see what you're seeing, but yeah, the website is updated.
Thank you.
Are we good to go to item number six? Okay. Item number six, discussion and possible action on Resolution 2015-25, resolution providing for the sale of approximately $1,845,000 community development lease revenue refunding bonds, Series 2016A, and we have someone from Ellers to talk on that.
Just before Marine starts, just so, CDA discussed this, this was an item that we talked about actually last week, Tuesday, at our special meeting. In order to kind of start this process, Marine is here from Ellers to walk through that process for the folks who weren't a part of the CDA discussion, but did everybody get a packet up here? Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure, sorry, Marine.
Not a problem. Okay. Great, so I would like to go through the packet that I handed out earlier, and this will give us the details related to the refunding of 2006 CDA lease revenue bonds, and the proposed refinancing is for the amount of $1,845,000. The first four pages in the packet include the details related to the refinancing, and I'm happy to go through this with you or answer any questions that anyone may have. Otherwise, I'd like to start on page five, which is our sizing worksheet. The 2006 CDA lease revenue bond was a borrowing for TID 6 and TID 7 projects, and so the proposed refunding of that issue, we have broken down between what would be refinanced allocated to TID 6 and what would be refinanced allocated to TID 7. The result is a net issue size of $1,845,000, and we have in the green column how we came to that number. The next three pages are going to provide details related to the savings that the refunding is estimated to provide. So on page six, we have our TID 6 savings, and the refinancing is going to be done over a 10-year period from 2016 to 2026. So over that 10-year period, we have an estimated savings of approximately $175,000. Now, the, as it's listed here, the principal and interest over that 10-year period of time will be from TID 6 revenue, will be paying that issue. The next page, the same situation, TID 7 revenue will be paying the principal and interest that is listed under the red heading there, and the savings that would be achieved in TID 6, or we estimate would be achieved, would be about $55,000. And then combining the allocation of the refinancing between TID 6 and TID 7, we have an estimate, an estimate of about $230,000 of future value savings over a 10-year period of time. So the agenda item on, or the item for approval tonight is the resolution to move forward with the sale of, or the refinancing. If the council approves the resolution, the timeline of events is listed on page four. We would be moving forward with a rating call on this coming Friday, and then I would be back before the council on December 15th to go over the results of the sale. Does anyone have any questions or would you like me to go into further detail on anything included within the report?
I think just generally, for the people sitting in the audience, maybe we should clarify what area TID 6 and 7 are.
So, TID, I don't know if you would like to give a great, more detailed description of where it is on the map, but TID 7 is the downtown Merchant Row District, and then TID 6 is the industrial park. Is that, would you let me go into further detail with that, or does that describe? Okay.
There's a motion in a second, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries, thank you. Item number seven, discussion and possible action regarding facade grant reimbursement Agnew Properties American Family Insurance.
The city received a request from Agnew Properties Insurance, Chris Agnew, the American Family Insurance agent, who has moved his office from the location located on the corner of Merchant Row and Madison Avenue to further down Merchant Row at 144 Merchant Row. As part of that, Mr. Agnew purchased that building, which is commonly referred to as the Sockness Building, which was the former bakery site, has moved his agency into that building, and is now looking to do some rehab of the exterior of the building. As part of those rehabilitation efforts, he's requested that he take advantage of the city's facade grant reimbursement program. This item was just discussed about an hour ago by the CDA. The CDA approved the grant reimbursement contingent upon Mr. Agnew providing compliance with the facade grant program guidelines, including receipt of payment to the appropriate vendors for the work completed. The council has the final say on these items and could make a motion to approve that grant application by Mr. Agnew as well, or if there's other questions about that program or the specifics of the request, we certainly would be available to answer those as well.
I realize that the information was not presented like it had been done in the past, but one of my concerns is that this whole program is based on city dollars that we are assisting with here, and one of the requirements is that each of those vendors or contractors that are used show verification of insurance, and I just want to make sure that we get that included.
Sure. Yeah, I certainly can make that part of the motion, that prior to reimbursement, that would be to be provided, and what we would do is just contact Mr. Agnew tomorrow and have him provide that in advance, because obviously, once the work's been completed, if it wasn't completed by a qualified contractor, we wouldn't reimburse him, so it'd be to his benefit to provide that in advance of the work.
Sarah, motion?
He's probably their agent, so.
So, the motion is to award the facade grant reimbursement to Agnew Properties. Is there a second?
And then I think that the CDA committee also had some other requests too, that they, that he followed the application requirements, some other documents.
The CDA requested that, well, basically approved Agnew Properties American Family Insurance request for a facade grant program up to $5,000 contingent on proof of completion and payment to the appropriate vendors, that's, which is part of the process, yep.
Okay. I'll second that motion then, to include the items that I...
I would just suggest you could shortcut it by just stating that it's contingent upon compliance with all of the requirements for the facade grant program.
Any further discussion or questions?
I guess I was uncomfortable that we were not given the layout plans for what he was proposing to do. There were no renderings, there were no mockups available. I find that very uncomfortable, and I hope that will not happen again.
So noted. Anybody else? Thank you, Nancy. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
So, if I'm correct, it was a 4-2 vote?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So the motion carries. Item number eight, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2015-26 to allow for an increase on the city's 2015 levy limit worksheet, Dan or Al?
I can take it, Dan passed out this resolution right before the meeting. This resolution is the resolution that's required by the state in order to increase the operational budget for the fire department above the levy, which we did, of course, this year. This is a similar resolution that was passed or is going to be passed by the town. We had conversations with the town today to make sure that the language mirror each other. As required by state law, if we are going to increase the operational budget of the joint fire department above the levy, then we need to pass this resolution, so we brought this forward in order to make sure that we comply with that resolution requirement, so we can put this on our levy limit worksheet at the end of the... requirement, so we can put this on our levy limit worksheet at the end of the year. Again, this wouldn't be necessary if we weren't increasing the operational budget of the fire department. But since we are, we need to do this in order to take advantage of that levy limit worksheet exemption that it provides us. As little as it is, we need it.
A move that we approve Resolution 2015-26 to allow for an increase in the city's 2015 levy limit worksheet.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number nine. Discussion and possible action to accept the donation of a fence in Veterans Park.
Okay. You have a memo about this in your packet. This was a situation that started a couple of years ago. We need to install the new playground at Veterans Park. As the memo says, originally, we were going to remove a tree that was in the corner of the property or in the back lot line. Mr. Watkins, at that time, thought the tree was on his property, so he didn't want it removed. The tree didn't interfere with the playground, so we left it there. Later, you know, this past spring and summer, a storm wind event caused a tree to fall down. It fell on the playground. Didn't really damage the playground, but had to be removed just so kids weren't in the playground around a tree that could have problems. He paid to have it removed. This fall, October, was about when this started, he was going to reinstall the privacy fence. It's about three sections of fence between the playground and his backyard, which makes a nice privacy separation. Anyways, the fence company went and checked the lot pins, and they informed him that his previous fence was probably about, you know, into the park a little ways. So they didn't want to put that up. He called. I went up there a few times and went with Gary. We did find all of the four pins for his property. And at that point, you could tell that the tree was on the park property and also the fence was. He would like to put the fence back up just as a privacy between the playground. The playground is close to the back lot line, so it is a nice place to have a fence. Anyways, the only way to put the fence up would be, you know, to do easements or land sales or something, because it'd be on city property. Worked with Al and with Mark, and a solution for this would be that if he would donate those three sections of fence to the park, then that fence is actually city property. But part of the donation is that he takes care of the fence, the east side of the fence, and that little bit of property in between the fence and his. So then it's a donation to the city. There's no land exchange, there's no easements. There's no, is it possible of adverse, you know, is it adverse possession possibility? And this way would take care of the situation, where he can have his privacy back. And, you know, and it doesn't cost us anything for this donation, and we're not deeding land or doing anything, you know, as far as those expenses. Parks and Recreation Commission was okay with working on agreement with him on this. They were, you know, an approval contingent on council accepting a donation in an agreement. We did get an agreement made out. You have a copy of it. The Watkins are in favor of this, if the council's in favor of it, for this agreement. And so, so that was, if you would want to accept the donation with the agreement, that, you know, they're going to pay for the fence and do the maintenance on the east side of the fence and the few shrubs and stuff that cross the property line a little bit, they'll take care of those too.
I recommend that we accept the donation of the fence contingent on staff working out the details of the maintenance with the owner.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments or discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
And Mayor, just when you sign that, if you could just date your signature so that we have a reference as to when this agreement was entered into, that would be helpful.
And what date would you like me to put on it?
Today.
Okay. Just to be clear. Okay, item number 10. Discussion and possible action regarding the 2016 budget. Now, this is not an area where we formally adopt the budget. We formally adopt the budget at the December 1st meeting, but it doesn't mean that we can't work on the budget tonight.
So based off our previous conversation, do we need to do something in, as a formal matter, in so that Al can at least explore this issue? My idea here is to explore the opportunities of having a bus come once, if not twice, maybe seeing if both of those options are available. And I think I would remind everybody that it's also an opportunity for people in Janesville to frequent our businesses here, you know. While everybody can make that assumption that that is a possibility, I've spoken to people who like to use our Y, they like to go to Charming Bees, and they've taken that route as well. So I just, I want to make sure we at least explore that option. Do we need a motion?
Would you mind if we explored that option and other options?
Absolutely.
Absolutely you would mind, or you wouldn't mind?
No. You can explore other options, but I would like to emphasize the usage of a bus. It's not something that you see in a 5,000 populated city, and we have that availability due to the size of Janesville and having that there. And perhaps it causes a desire for increased usage, perhaps if different businesses and different types of economic opportunity come to the city, that this would be a chance to keep that relationship working with Janesville.
So that's a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Is there further comment, discussion?
Yes. I actually have learned from the gathering place that there's also situations where we have people in town that can't get around town. And so what my suggestion is that not only do we look at the busing, if you choose to bring that back, I don't have a problem with that certainly, but also look at some of our local community members, some of the churches, some of our nonprofit groups, the Gathering Place themselves, Uber, I'd like to look into that. We previously also, prior to the bus, we looked at local, some of the taxi services, Brown's Cab, I recall, was one of them. I just feel like the transportation issue is a very important issue, and I'm right there with you as far as having a community of 5,000 that, to have that sort of a thing. And so I would really like for us to do a lot of research on this and find out exactly what we can do with it. As far as people coming to Milton from Janesville, just to go back to that comment, there's also people from Milton going to Janesville. Milton is only four miles from Janesville. And there are situations throughout various states where you have a major city like Janesville and a small city like Milton four miles away where services are provided. And it's for that exact reason, not only to bring people to Milton, but also to take those people in Milton into Janesville. And so I don't know where that conversation can take place with the Janesville City Council or the bus service, but I just feel like we need to look at all of those options. I personally have a situation where, in my hometown, where the city bus service charged, excuse me, charged a smaller community for the bus service. And then eventually, as the businesses grew out and into the extraterritorial areas, the bus service did actually pick that up. So I just would like to make sure that we can look at all options. I'd like to look at the cabs. A big thing that I heard from people about the empty buses are, you know, it was something that we brought to the transit system. And one of the problems that, with that, was they needed to have a bus that accommodated the wheelchairs, so they couldn't always go to those smaller buses. So have we looked at Right Way lately or any of these other, any other options? I just feel like we really need to take a look at this whole situation.
And when you are looking to review what Rock County Transit has to offer, because that is an available transportation for limited use.
Just the general comment that I have about those, based on what the motion and the second, and we haven't had a vote yet, but, you know, as I said earlier, in speaking with Janesville this afternoon, they were unsure if they would, if they would be, you know, if they would take us back. And like I said, I got a text right before this meeting that they would. But as far as a revised route schedule, I don't know. So we'd have to find that out from them. And the problem that we're up against is timing. Janesville adopts their budget on Monday. So if they were willing to look at a reduced schedule, they would need to be able to agree to that, research it, produce us the information, and then we would have to meet likely on Friday in order to, you know, approve that, if that's what we wanted to do, so they could have that available for their budget on Monday. So, you know, we're really crunched in that regard. As far as researching other options, county, Brown Cab and things like that, it would likely have to be outside of the budget process. I just don't see a way in which we can talk to another governmental agency that has no relationship with us as far as transportation, to be able to turn around some kind of proposal in two weeks when one of those weeks is really a half week due to the holiday, and we're adopting our budget on December 1st, and we can't adopt our budget any later. So, you know, with the decision that was made last Tuesday, you know, we really compressed that time schedule. I'm not saying by any means that an alternative approach can't be made, but it's likely going to be outside of this budget process if it's not with JTS. And that's really going to be up to them and their council as to whether they would, you know, whether it'd be worth it for them to continue a service at even a more reduced level for Milton. And it's just outside of our control. But researching other opportunities is certainly, is something that we can do and should do. But I just want to be realistic, that it's very likely going to happen outside of this budget process. And when I say that, I mean, we'll likely adopt the budget on December 1st without any kind of real understanding of what those alternative approaches could be, simply because there's just not time left to do that. The mayor has talked to me about several other options that we might be able to do as a city, and we would need to look at those as well, and look about our liability and insurance and things like that. And those items, they just take time, so. So I just don't want to create any expectation with this motion. I think it makes sense, and, you know, if the motion passes, we'll certainly investigate these other options. But I just want to be realistic with folks' expectation, that it's likely not going to be something that we'll be able to tackle in this budget process.
Unless it's JTS.
Unless it's JTS. That doesn't mean that we won't be able to do something in 2016 if we find a viable option, but we'll likely have to come back to you with that option, and it'll likely have to be an amendment to the budget. And that could be in December, that could be in January, it could be in February. It's just a matter of who's out there, who provides the service, who would be willing to provide the service, and what would the cost be?
So we have a motion and a second, correct?
Could we have the motion read back, please?
Sure.
Okay, as I understand it, it is motion to direct staff to explore other options for reduced bus services or transportation services to maintain some type of public transportation for Milton residents to access Janesville.
So that's, the motion was just to look into other, not just Janesville, just other, correct?
Correct. But I think, my understanding what Al's saying is, he will, he'll only in the next few days be able to look at Janesville, but if Janesville doesn't work out, they can look into other areas too.
I think we're asking an awful lot of Janesville after we said no. And now here, a week before they're ready to make their decision, I don't see that they would change it, have time to change it.
That is what he is noting, that the timing is not in sync.
Yeah. I mean, we can pass the motion, and Al can talk to Janesville, and they can say, yep, they can work on it, or no, they can't. But there is no option for them to work. Well, I mean, I can just tell Al to do it. But I think it would be better if you guys just, you know, waited on this subject.
Yeah, I mean, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I can see looking into other options, but I can't see asking Janesville, now we changed our mind again, you know, and then if they give us something else, they may say, well, they changed their mind, and we changed our mind again, we don't want to do that.
We don't know if we don't ask.
Well, it's a little late to be asking, I think.
Well, you could argue it was a little late to pass it after passing a six and nothing to have the service here too. I think it's our duty to at least explore what one day could cost, what two days would cost, you know, what. We'll get to it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I still know a few people that work at Janesville. I don't think I burnt all my bridges yet, at least at the Transit Department. You know, it's very likely that I could contact Rebecca. I told her that I would text her tonight, that I would contact her tonight. It's very likely that she could write back to me tonight and say, you know, we just can't do it. It's either what it was, or it's nothing. That might be what happens, I don't know. I don't know. But I understand certainly where Maxine's coming from, and I certainly sense it for that as well.
I mean, the thing of it is, Jeremy said, well, we could find out. That's right, we could find out how much it's going to cost, and then we say no. And then they've gone through all that work, hustled around to do, and then we say no.
They would probably know by Friday.
Maybe, I don't know. I don't know.
Any other further questions or comments or discussion?
Could you read the motion again?
As I understand it, okay. To direct staff to explore other options for reduced bus services or transportation services to maintain some type of public transportation for Milton residents to access Janesville? Does that sound like what you meant, Aldous A. Jack?
It's meant other options, but you're not bringing in Janesville already.
It's other options to include reduced bus service or, yeah, whatever public. Attorney Schrader is...
No, that sounds like it's accurately, what the motion was, was to pursue options. It didn't limit it to JTS. It's just that Al is indicating it's a practical matter, that's what it's going to be for budget purposes. So that will give the authority, if you decide that's appropriate. He's just noting it as part of the budget process, that's where he'll be able to get to at that point in time. And this motion is made pursuant to the budget process, so that's why he just made that point. You can limit it specifically, if you wish, to JTS, but it was, the original motion was broader than just JTS.
Any other further questions or comments?
No, the motion states strictly to Janesville, though. So we're not looking...
No, no, it doesn't. It does, but that was my interpretation. We can, that was my interpretation?
We would want them to come back.
Well, should Janesville come back?
But if we're going to, if we're going to look into this type, our transportation, then I do believe that we need to include transportation in Milton for people that need to get around.
Well, he's saying they don't have time to do it right now.
Right.
In the future, by this week, perhaps.
Am I mistaken in Al's description of that? As far as the budget process goes, this focus would be primarily with Janesville. If we pass it as is, do we leave the scope open then for him, as he described, would happen later than December 1st, so that he can explore these options then and present it to us instead of us asking him yet again?
I know what you mean.
Okay.
I would suggest it would be appropriate to...
I, I would suggest it would be appropriate to then have a new motion in that regard, because this motion is being brought up in the context of the budget discussion, just to, you're going beyond the scope of this item in the agenda if you take, make, I understand what you're saying, and I, I think from my hearing, that's appropriate, but, but right now, this is being brought up in the context of the budget, so the motion needs to recognize what its limitations are. After the budget process, I, it sounds like you have a broader motion you may want to bring at the next meeting, perhaps to, to pursue all these things that you're discussing right now. That's just my suggestion.
Sure, so we can just put it back on the agenda, as an item on the agenda? Okay? All right, so let's have a vote. Does anybody want the motion read again?
Okay, I, I changed it a little bit. To, okay, to direct staff to explore other options for reduced bus services or transportation services to maintain some type of public transportation for Milton residents between Milton and Janesville.
It's two motions in one.
Mark?
I mean... The main option is to consider Janesville right now. That's what Jeremy was asking for, is to consider and ask Janesville if they would go a different time, or more, or less, or two days, or three days. But then you're adding into their exploring other options. Let's either go with Janesville and then make a motion to explore other options, not both.
That's right.
Because that way, it's not fair to ask us to vote on whether we want to go with Janesville again, or whether we want other options. I'd like to see other options, but that don't necessarily mean I want to go with Janesville. So I, I think it's two motions in one.
So, from what I understand, you're asking for an alternate or substitute motion that narrows the scope to say, to direct staff to explore other options for reduced bus services with JTS for Milton residents between Milton and Janesville.
That's not the motion on the table.
It's not. You would have, right, you, you would have to make a, you're, I'm sorry, I'm, the term is slipping my mind.
No, you'd have to withdraw.
To see if it would, to see if it would be a friendly amendment to the most, to the, whoever the maker of the motion, or...
You have two options, you can vote on the motion as is, if it's defeated, there can be a new motion, that's one. And the other is that the, the individual who made the motion can so amend the motion, and the person, the second, can accept the amendment, and then you can vote on that.
So I would like to amend the motion to Maxine's elegant representation of... Wait a second. Teresa.
Uh, yeah, Alder Rush, are you okay with that? Are we okay procedurally?
Yes.
Is that it? Can we vote now?
Sure.
The final motion that we're going to actually vote on.
You guys are working really hard tonight, I'm so proud of you. All right. To direct staff to explore other options for reduced bus services with JTS for Milton residents between Milton and Janesville. Or to provide transportation for Milton?
I thought he said was fine.
The silence is making me nervous. Are we ready then? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you for not making me break another tie. The motion carries, good job, you guys. All right, Linda, you have 90 seconds to update us on the League of Municipalities Conference.
Well, before we, before we change the agenda though, or the, go off of the budget, I still, I think it's important that we take a look at adding that extra money into the Tourism Development Committee. I know that we can work with companies and whittle down what they're giving us to cracker crumbs if we want to, but really, if we're going to be effective in promoting the city, I don't think that putting $6,000 into our tourism budget is a bad idea. We have people come into this community from around the world. Milton House sees people from around the world. We have people that come to the gathering place. We have people that come over to, to our businesses. We have people that drive through town and visit our dog park. And one of the things that I want to point out to you is, by, by not including that extra $1,000 into our budget, I can't even justify doing a flyer like this, two-sided. I have prices on this flyer, two sizes, or, I'm sorry, two sides, color flyer with photo, two courier distributions for $600. Now, we have, coming into our city this summer, we once again have the Civil War Days, and then we also have a group of people working on a concert up at Schilberg Park. So, I mean, those right there are two events that we are, we're going to be looking for different ways to advertise and promote these events. And this, these are events that bring people into our community, they're, they're events that keep people into our community. So, one of the other things that I brought tonight, this was from a newspaper article out of the Gazette, it was referenced from the Associated Press, and it was about tourism in Rock County. One, and I'm sorry, I don't have the date of this publication, because I didn't, I, I cut it off. So, anyway, one, one of the things that the article states is, that the title of the article was Tourism: Another Good Year Expected. Traveler's spending in Rock County supported the full-time equivalent of 3,798 jobs, representing income of more than $84 million in wages and salary. This was reported by the Janesville Convention and Visitor Bureau. Walworth County Tourism supported 6,834 full-time jobs. Rock County spending generated more than $25 million in taxes and other fees, according to the estimates. I, I cannot emphasize enough how these things, the pancake breakfast, the Civil War Days, I don't know if everybody can hear me, I don't, I don't know if I can emphasize how important these things are as far as our own economic development in the city of Milton. These are the things that a company is going to be looking at when they decide whether or not to relocate their company. How much do we support what we have? How, how much are we supporting our culture? How much do we support our recreation?
I don't disagree that they are important, but their taxes are also important, and we have spent hours looking at ways to cut, 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 uh, cut areas that are very important to the community and to our citizens. I think that if we look at the Tourism Committee and its impact on our citizens, and decide that there is a need to add $1,000 to their budget based on their impact on the community, then we need to look at the other committees within the city, and look at which one can give up $1,000 or a portion of $1,000 and begin to add up deductions from their budgets and come up with that money to give them. It, it just can't continue to be added up and say, well, my committee does a little bit more to add to the community, and someone else, well, my committee does this or that. They are all very important, that's why we have committees in all of those areas. But we took a lot of money from a lot of other people that worked their tails off, and it wasn't because we felt that they didn't do anything, it's because we needed to cut the money.
Look, I would also just like to point out though, Teresa, and I, I understand what you're saying completely, but one of those things that we did cut too is, we cut our nonprofits. We cut this, the city portion of what those people were using to bring tourism and development into the city. And, you know, I, my first thought was, you know, why not go to the chamber and say, well, can you donate an extra $1,000 for this commercial? But how can I go to them when I said, well, you asked for this much, but we're only going to give you this much? So, it's just, it's an important, it's $1,000. I don't know what it does to our tax rate. And actually, I haven't seen budgets for the committees and what they're all spending on to even be able to make that decision.
Do you want to make a motion?
I, I just have a quick question. Mark, we had, we had this motion, and we, if I remember correctly, and it didn't get a second, but can we bring another motion, just like the other motion that didn't get a second last time?
She's referring to the meeting last Tuesday.
You weren't here.
They weren't here.
Think, think, think.
So, so, your question, this, there was a motion made last, last week to increase the tourism funding by $1,000, and that motion failed for lack of second. So I think your question is, can that motion be re-motioned tonight? Yeah, right?
Yes, okay. Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Mayor?
Yes.
I can say something. This comes up every year, at the end of the process, putting the budget together, that somebody, nonprofit or committee would like some more money. But this year especially, we have asked every single department to make huge budget cuts. And the only question I have is what Teresa said, who's going to provide that $1,000? Is it Houghey? Is it the Police Department, Fire Department? Is it your administrative department? Because there's no cash flow in out there. This is a wrong time, this should have been done when, when the process first started, not when it's all done and all these departments have made their own cuts.
In defense of the committee though, Dave, we didn't have this information. We just got the information on, help me out with that, Al, it was right before Ingo left, I believe?
Yeah, it was either, it was either late September, early October, I can't remember the exact date, but whatever the last word was.
Yeah, so it's, it's not like we didn't have that information. And if you think about it, all of those committees, that's pretty much what they're doing, is they are bringing, they're spending their money on tourism dollars. You know, the, the walking tour booklets, those are, those are tour, that's a tourism thing. The stuff that the chamber does, that's a tourism thing. You know, I, for years, I have tried to point out that the city of Milton is like a pie, and every single entity is important. I just don't feel like $1,000 is going to make that big of a difference on our tax increase. Can you give me some numbers, Dan?
I, I don't think this is a, a numbers thing, because I think everyone here recognizes that the impact of $1,000 will be relatively minimal on the tax rate. I think it's the philosophical that we're, we're increasing the levy by over $400,000, and, and when, and when do we stop? You know, where, where's that line? And I think what a lot, what I'm hearing from a lot of, a lot of you guys up on, is that we've hit, we've hit that point. It, it's not about the next $1,000 and whether there's merit or no merit to it, it's, we're tapped out.
Does anybody have any places where they wish to look at to make that adjustment?
I think it's probably a good time to make the motion first, to see if there's any support.
All right, I'll make the motion that we add $500 to the tourism budget.
There's a motion to add $500 to the tourism budget, is there a second? Not hearing a second, then the motion is kind of dead on the table, and then we can't discuss it anymore, okay?
Except I do want to still ask the question, is there any other areas that the council wants to look at to change money around in the budget, whether it be a department or a committee? Because if we are only going to have one more budget hearing, and that's going to be...
There's no more budget hearings.
Right, if this is going to be it, then we need to have everybody speak now.
Okay, so is, does anybody else have any other motions that they would like to make concerning the budget? Any further discussion? Okay, I think we're just going to move on to...
Maybe we should just go ahead and pass it.
We can't pass it. Item number 11 then, Presentation on the League of Municipalities Annual Conference by Linda, do you think you can make a very, just a couple minutes, or do you want to do it at...
Do you want me to do it another time? It's getting late.
Okay. So maybe we could, what did we do last time with this?
Refer it to the next meeting?
We'll refer it to the next meeting. But I know that Al had just...
Oh, I mean, another option that, that maybe, and, and this is up to Linda, if you wanted to type something up, you, you know, your experiences at the conference or suggestions that you had, you could send it to me, or you can send it to the council, and then if folks have questions for additional information, we can discuss those either on a TSP basis. I mean, it's, it's up to you, yeah.
I, I would encourage that, because some of the ideas you shared at the last meeting would be, would be nice to take a look at, at it.
Okay, yes. I, I can hear that, that's not a problem.
Hearing none. Item number 13, our next meeting date will be Tuesday, December 1st, 2015, at 7:00 PM, and we will be voting to adopt the budget that meeting. Item number 14, mayor and elder person reports, we'll start with Dave, anything?
No.
Jeremy?
Good.
Maxine? Linda?
Um, yes, I do have something. The city of Milton and others are planning a merry Milton holiday.
We're still looking for anybody that might be interested in singing at our tree lighting ceremony. So if you know of any, or even anybody that might like play the trumpet or something, Al?
I do not play the trumpet.
Drums. Drums.
He sings. He said, he said he'd sing.
He sings?
I said he's old.
Oh, in any case, if you could just contact... In any case, if you could just contact, contact Danny at the Chamber and, and then she will certainly be able to give you some direction. And then I also just want to remind you that along with that Christmas celebration, that tickets are for sale, are on sale, excuse me, for both the Christmas Carol at the Milton House. No? All gone. Too bad.
Actually, I can talk to you about that later, actually, while we have it.
Okay. And then there's also still tickets available that you can get through the Chamber for the Christmas Walk. That's all.
Thank you. Nancy?
There are two things, two things that I would like to improve on. One is when personnel and finance receives the name of people receiving bartender's license, I would like to know the location that they are planning to be bartenders at. It makes correlation a lot more clear as to where business is going in Milton. And the other thing is, and I'm hoping that Al is going to say, oh, but he was going to talk about that, is that I would like an update on the bowling alley and their liquor license. Are you, or is that going on the next agenda or is that going to be spoken of?
I, I, I don't have an update on it.
Okay, I would like to put that on the next agenda.
I think that's perfectly appropriate, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa? Okay. One thing that's coming up this Thursday night at Charming Bees is there's a fundraiser, the Ladies Night Out fundraiser. And the proceeds from this fundraiser go to the Milton Area Youth Center. And tickets are $5 in advance and $10 at the door. I also wanted to let everyone know that the Gathering Place Murder Mystery Dinner Theater on Saturday was really awesome. It was a lot of fun. It was a great fundraiser for the Chamber and for the Gathering Place. And I think they usually do one in February for Valentine's Day too. So, if you get the chance to go, it was, it was really fun. Lots of people there, a good crowd, good mixture of age ranges. And I'm looking forward to our December 6th, 2nd, 6th? When is the Christmas tree lighting? December 6th. And so, we're gonna have Santa arriving. We got stuff going on at Goodrich Park. We have some trees that are gonna be lit up and you guys all know because we talked about that a little bit last week. So, mark your calendars because that's a new Christmas event taking place in the city of Milton. And thank you everyone tonight for all your discussion and your serious debate. Staff reports. City Administrator.
I just wanted to point out one thing that, that we, we didn't really touch on in the budget conversation. And we did talk about it a little bit last week, that, that with the change in the equalized assessed value, the overall effective tax rate stays the same, but the, but the percentage increase went down considerably. And also, in addition with the, with the removal of the bus service that further reduced the, the tax rate change, if you remember back on October 6th, we had, we had presented a budget that had about an 8.4% increase. That is now down to 5.8%. So, just so folks kind of know where that's at. So, that, that has gone down significantly for a couple of reasons. One, for the equalized value, the increase in equalized value. And two, because of the additional cuts that the council have made. So, just to let you know, we're at, at 5.8% and to put that into perspective, last year's budget was, was approved with a 4.87% increase. Then with the amendment that was made, it was actually over a 7% increase to the overall tax rate. So, we're, we're actually down considerably below where we were last year, which again is good news in, in relative terms, but overall still higher than I think everybody up here would like it to be, but it is, it is the case. So, it's, it's kind of one of those things. It's, it's good news that is, that we hope to be better in the future. Other than that, I, I don't know if everybody's had an opportunity to meet Carrie. Carrie is out in the audience this evening. She is the new executive director over at the Milton House. There she is. I know we're going into closed session after this, so, you know, there won't be folks milling around and we certainly don't want to keep her later, but that, I wanted to make sure we introduce her. So, folks kind of put a face with a name or a name with a face, either way. Other than that, the mayor had already mentioned, we, our plan is to adopt the budget on December 1st. If, if there is a need for a special meeting between now and then, we will certainly make that announcement ASAP. And when I say that, I likely mean tomorrow. And, and that, like I said, that will be heavily predicated on, on Janesville's ability to turn those numbers around and their willingness to turn those numbers around. But other than that, barring a special meeting, the, the next time we meet will be the adoption of the, of the budget. And, and then we're on to 2017. Right, Dan?
After we close on 2017.
No joint fire, no police department, City Clerk, Deputy Treasurer, Director of Public Works.
The first salt and sand delivery is gonna be the 3rd and 4th of December. So, if, if you want salt and sand delivered to your house, call 868-6914 and we'll put you on the list and then they deliver sand to your driveways. Also, leaf, actually the leaf raking out in the streets is officially over now. We're encouraging people not to do that. We're gonna try to continue to pick up whatever's left. But the yard waste bin is open down at the garage.
Thank you. Finance Director?
I got nothing.
First strings. Okay. Closed session. Teresa?
Consideration of a motion to a meeting in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State's, or Statute of 1985, one, the deliberating or negotiating of purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons requires a closed session regarding negotiations of a TIF deal and TIF date.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's a unanimous?